Counselor Luciani, adoption of the agenda. I'll read the land of all of them first before I hand it to you. Today, we recognize the initial back the Hottashoni and the Atawandarin as the customary keepers and defenders of the great turtle island, its waters and its lands. We honor their long history in welcoming others to the spiritual territory or aims to uphold and uplift their voices and values as our host nation. Counselor Luciani.
Yeah, I move on myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Barris, that council reconvenes open session at 6:00 P. M. and reports the following to the meeting close to the public, that the council received for information the development commissioners report EDM twenty-five dash zero zero seven CLB regarding option agreement portion of airport and the council provided direction to staff and that the council received for information the C A O's report C A O twenty-five dash zero zero one CLB Town Hall project update.
Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all us in favor. Carrie, adoption of the agenda, Deputy Mayor?
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Parker, that the agenda for the council meeting of May twenty-six, twenty twenty-five be approved.
Any comments or additions? All us in favor? Now I'm going to turn the chair over briefly to the Deputy Mayor.
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Oh, sir. We'll ask now for the scope of the community or interest or the general nature thereof. And knowing that the mayor has a community or interest or the general nature thereof, which is incorrect. Hey, writing?
Yes, I have.
To the clerk's office, yeah, please.
I, Deputy Basie, declare a community or interest in regards to agenda item number twelve point nine of the agenda for the above noted meaning for the following reasons. I have a community or interest related to the B I A boundary expansion as my husband is an owner of the building coming downtown for it.
Thank you. We return the chair to you.
Thank you. Adoption of council meetings. Counselor Rose, start.
Thank you. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer, that the council meeting minutes dated May twelve, twenty twenty-five.
Any errors or omissions? All us in favor? Carrie. Next, we have a volunteer presentation, and I would like to invite our Chair of the Museum Culture Heritage and Special Awards Advisory Committee, Carrie Lewis, a familiar face in our council chambers. Welcome.
Hello again, everybody. Is this on? Okay.
We really hope to talk into it.
Strong enough to call the garden, I can go. Uh, Maryville Basie, counselors, staff and guests, it's my honor to present Lindsay Majeneski for the Volunteer Award in recognition of her outstanding dedication, leadership and commitment to the success of the Tilsonburg soccer program. Particularly her role as coordinator of the U four division. Definitely my favorite division because they're so sticky cute. Lindsay exemplifies the spirit of true volunteerism by providing not only organizational skills, but also a deep passion for nurturing young players in the foundational years of their soccer journey. The U four is the cornerstone of the program, introducing children to soccer in a fun and positive and encouraging environment. As the leader of this division, she has made profound impact on both the players and their families by creating an inclusive and dynamic experience that fosters learning, teamwork and confidence. Through her tireless efforts, the U fourteen division has become more than just a starting point for young athletes. It's become a safe, supportive space where children develop their first love for the game. Congratulations, Lindsay. If you want to come up here to accept your award, that would be lovely. Maryville Basie. Other side. Oh, the orchid too. Here, I can set this. Look at this logo. You don't wanna, you put it right in front of, I could have my. Okay.
You want to do it?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got, you get all the.
Do you want me to carry this for you?
You know, I think I'll be okay.
You're okay.
Thank you very well. She's a soccer mom, so she's. Congratulations. Congratulations, Lindsay, and thank you for all you do for the youth of our community. Next, we're moving to tourism Oxford update, and we welcome Meredith to the podium. Meredith is the tourism manager for Oxford County.
Thank you very much, Mayor and members of council for having me here today. I'm excited to provide to you an update on activities and tourism from twenty twenty-four and also plans and activities that are happening in twenty twenty-five. If you're not familiar with tourism Oxford, we are a service of the County of Oxford, and we provide support in the areas of management, product development and marketing of tourism. Uh, from our five-year plan presented last year, here's a few stats that might be used to some of you. We do work with over a hundred and ninety tourism businesses and organizations in Oxford County. Over three, four hundred people are employed in the tourism hospitality sector in Oxford County. And we had over six hundred and seventy thousand Canadian and U. S. Visitor trips in twenty twenty-three. Not, yes, twenty twenty-three, uh, which was equivalent to one point four million nights. So when we provide those numbers to provide some context, that is anybody that came and stayed overnight in the area. Uh, that includes business travel, that includes pleasure travel, visiting friends and family, et cetera. And we go to the next slide. When we talk about tourism in Oxford County, we like to talk about tourism trends, and that's part of our activities in the management realm. So we're always wanting to know what's happening with visitors, what they're interested in, so that we can then support the businesses to better understand what consumers are looking for and what will be popular in the future. So here are a couple of the transfer Canadians from Skyscanner in twenty twenty-five. That includes conscious travel being on the rise. People really want to ensure their trip has a positive impact on the community that they're visiting, so they are interested in sustainability and giving back. Uh, there's actually, uh, when you travel, uh, to parts of Europe, you can actually do a waste pickup as a tourism activity on one of the waterways. I believe it's in Helsinki. I'm not certain on that. Uh, also, consumers are really looking for a sense of community, and as residents, we find we're looking for that as well. People want connection now more than ever, and that's something that continues within the visitor realm, whether they can make a connection to somebody local to understand an activity better, or if they're having a shared experience with others. Also, uh, when we're looking at this, museums continue and culture continue to be a primary activity. But people aren't looking to just take photos, they're looking to immerse themselves in hands-on activities as well. Next slide. So products that we have in Oxford County, um, first is our tour Oxford brand. So this is really leaning into the fact that wherever you are in Oxford County, you're never too far from your next stop. And within that, we have a couple campaigns that we promote. Uh, the first is Your Next Stop. And this program, what we say is that, uh, you're saving on drive time and spending more time on fun. Because we're promoting stops that are all in close proximity to each other. So people are spending less time on the road and they're visiting more just activities and places to go within the destination. We're actually working on and only in Tilsonburg, Your Next Stop program, and we're holding the first meeting next week, uh, hoping to engage some of the local businesses. Cycling is also something that continues to grow, and we promote paved cycling, trail cycling, uh, and gravel roads actually is an area that has had significant growth in the past couple of years. Experiential tourism is also something that consumers continue to demand, and when you look at those Skyscanner results, you see that as well. People are looking for that connection when they're traveling and hearing our local stories. So experiential tourism is where people can deep dive with a local guide into learning more about an activity such as, uh, that will, at Good Bud with Big Cheese Days, they've had people out to make custom desserts with Sarah and Polly. That's a great example. Uh, also wellness and outdoors continues to trend, and we're very fortunate in Oxford County to have a wide variety of outdoor activities, whether it's on farm or in forest, and then also, uh, Nordic spas that we have in the area. And then, of course, culinary tourism continues with our Oxford Fresh brand we have in partnership with the Oxford County Federation of Agriculture, and then the Oxford County Cheese Trail. So when we look at activities from last year, it was a lot of activities, uh, in the management aspect, actually. First of all, we completed our five-year plan for tourism, and, uh, with that, we also completed our, uh, silver level sustainable tourism uh, destination certification with Green Staff. So with that, we also have a three-year list of activities and recommendations that we can be implementing. So we started implementation of those activities this year, and we also started data management improvements last year, which we're continuing into this year. And with those data management improvements, it's going to be improved customer service for businesses and also visitors. Uh, so we're very excited to see those rolled out by the end of the year. We also did a lot in the area of partnership, um, activities. So over two hundred thousand, um, we were able to access, uh, by taking our dollars and, uh, increasing what we've invested to get another, uh, two, over two hundred thousand dollars back, uh, through partner funds. So that includes marketing activities, uh, which I'll be highlighting in a minute, but then also we received funding through Fed Dev to do much of the work, including the five-year plan. And then when it comes to product development, we continue to do our business education, so we offer opportunities for them to learn new skills and gain access to resources. That includes, uh, online digital marketing certificate that businesses could take. Uh, this was our second cohort of people that have been completing that program, and they'll be finishing it shortly. We also had four new experiences launched. We launched a new restaurant program to encourage visitation to local restaurants during the quiet month of January. And then we also tested out a new hospitality hop, um, program, uh, which we held at one rural location and then so at an urban. Uh, and then the Tourism Innovation Grant continues to be popular, which we do in partnership with Community Futures Oxford and Rural Oxford. And then for marketing, as I mentioned, we did tap into a lot of, um, matching funds. Because of that, we had over four, forty-one million, um, impressions on our ads, which is extraordinary. Usually we're about twenty million. Um, the reason it's so large is we tapped into Destination Ontario Advertising twice and partnered with them and also the larger, our larger tourism region, Ontario Southwest. We also continue to have a loyal following for subscribers and followers through our social media and newsletters and increases in website traffic. And as we develop our new website, we're hoping to see those numbers increase further in the next couple of years as the site is established. And then going forward, uh, we are working on the tourism five-year plan. That work continues. Um, as you have the slides, I'm not going to go into this in great detail to respect your time. But, uh, like quickly, our, our vision's a vibrant tourism destination that contributes to Oxford County's economic, social and environmental well-being. And within that, we're going to be working in those three key areas that we mentioned, management, product development and marketing. Then just the next slide provides some examples of the objectives that we want to accomplish. What we realize with this is we have to have the appropriate tools in place, we have to have the appropriate information, that's where our data collection is important. And we also know that we need to be educating and supporting our businesses to ensure that we put a strong foot forward and that we're being effective with our marketing. And so that is, um, that's it for that component. And then when we look at twenty twenty-five things that we're doing at this time, we are improving our mentor training and monitoring. As I mentioned, we're developing, um, new systems to collect information from businesses and a new way to manage business information that will provide them with greater control over what appears on the tourism Oxford website. Every tourism business in Oxford County can apply for a free listing on the tourism Oxford website. Uh, and now they're going to be able to input their own events and go in and quickly manage and monitor their own content as well, which is quite exciting for us. As I mentioned, Your Next Stop, we're continuing to expand that program with a new tour happening in Tilsonburg and Woodstock and Ingersoll. And we're launching a visiting friends and family campaign. So that's to get our local residents out discovering what's in their own backyard. And so we're excited to be launching that this summer. We've developed branding specific for it. So if you're familiar with the Tour Oxford logo, we basically have highlighted the O U R in tour, so people are getting ownership and pride in what's right in their backyard. So we're excited to be launching that this year. We're also working with the Outdoor Farm Show, and we're looking to improve communication even more beyond the industry newsletter that we have, and maybe it'd be easier for businesses to get in touch with us and access resources. Anybody can subscribe for our tourism industry newsletter for if they work within the industry, and it's at OxfordCounty.ca/tourism, where all the tourism programs and services for businesses are listed. So that's a quick update. I'm happy to take any questions that you have, and I also want to remind you that we're always happy to work together. Uh, whether it's sharing data that we have access to, we do photography partnership and have done that in the past with the town. Uh, we also operate the, the numerous businesses in the tourism industry, and they have shared when there's opportunities where maybe you're looking for vendors for a local event, uh, and we're always happy to talk about collaboration. So thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Meredith. Very, very informative. It looks like you have a busy year ahead. Uh, we'll open our question, Counselor Spencer.
Not through you, Chair, uh, to Meredith. Um, as your vision states, you folks are one of the stewards of Oxford County's economic, social and environmental well-being. I always appreciate the information that you give us, um, and I think it can help us when we're making decisions here. Um, where can folks connect? Are you on all the social media platforms? I know your website is on the presentation, but are you everywhere where people can connect with, uh, Tourism Oxford?
We're not everywhere, but you can find us on, uh, Meta, so Facebook and Instagram. And then also you can find us on YouTube, so please subscribe. I'm trying to share a lot of content through there. And, uh, do visit OxfordCounty.ca/tourism because the one thing that always gets to you is your inbox. So subscribe for the industry newsletter.
Thank you for your question. Thank you very much. Counselor Parker.
Move by myself and seconded by Counselor Luciani. The council received the delegation from Meredith Maywood, Tourism Manager, Oxford County regarding a tourism Oxford update as information.
Any further discussions from council? All those in favor? Carrie. Next, we have a, we have the Chair of the Youth Advisory Committee, Liam Spencer Enright. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council and supporting staff. Thank you for your time. Um, I'm just here on behalf of the Youth Advisory Committee to, uh, make a recommendation based on a questionnaire that we formed. Um, with this committee being so new, um, we had spent a lot of time to kind of figure out what we wanted to do with our future time as well as a lot of time educating the youth in, uh, I guess, the things that, uh, we could be working towards and some of the goals that we could work with. Um, so what we landed on was, um, after kind of educating the youth as much as we can on the different, uh, sectors, different committees that the town deals with, um, we landed on developing a questionnaire within, um, you know, the most important sections that the youth thought out of those categories that the town kind of, um, operates within, and then from there developed, uh, some questions, um, kind of edited the questionnaire. And basically what I'm here to do is to, uh, rec- compare, recommend the council to, um, adopt a questionnaire and hopefully distribute it to uh, other areas in town where youth can access it and answer it. Uh, and then that information will hopefully be relatively useful to council as well as useful to the, uh, Youth Advisory Committee moving forward. So, um, currently all of our members are pretty much at the point of graduating out, and we're going to be needing some recruitment. Um, so with recruitment and new faces, then, um, hopefully this, uh, questionnaire and the data that can come from it, um, kind of leaves, um, you know, something to pick up on uh, with the new grouping that comes in from recruitment. So, um, i- it's pretty simple in the sense of content. We really tried to find questions that were quickly answered, um, as well as quickly analyzed for data. We didn't want long run on, um, answers, you know, for students, um, or youth, and we didn't want, you know, anyone analyzing that data to have to spend too much time. So most of our answers are very black and white, concrete. Our goal was the questionnaire to be completed within a few minutes, so no one's time is really taken up. Um, and then hopefully, like I said, uh, that information will be useful for council and then the future Youth Advisory Committee. So, um, yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be open to take them.
Thank you. Um, it looks like it's excellent. I'd say it's very well balanced between the sports and the, um, art, arts and culture, which I was nice to see. Um, I'll open the floor up to council if you have any questions. Counselor Spencer.
Um, more of a comment. I just wanted to say how proud I was of this group, uh, that worked on this questionnaire. Uh, we consulted with the Executive Director of B I A, the Parks and Rec Department, the Police Board Chair came as delegations, um, and most as, um, uh, the youth, uh, council chair stated, um, most are moving along next year. Um, and I think we've accomplished a lot. I think it'll give us some insight to the needs of the youth of this community. And I'm really grateful to have been a part of it and sit with those folks, and I know they're not here other than, uh, the Chair, but they're all very, very busy with academics, with sports, with jobs. And I just want to really wish them, uh, the best of luck and thank them for their work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, Counselor, let's.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, move by person, seconded by Counselor Luciani. A, the report titled Youth Advisory Council Recommendation, we received as information. And B, the council approves the Youth Advisory Services Survey and direct staff to distribute and promote it to local youth, which results to be provided to the Youth Advisory Council for information. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, does anyone, is there any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. I'll read my.
Next, we are moving on to thirty-one Earl Street property. Seafish, do you have any comments regarding the. Self-explanatory, but just want to brush on where we were and where we ended up on this. Seattle, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So apparently there is a recommendation on thirty-one Earl Street. That the report titled CAO twenty-five zero zero five thirty-one Earl Street property be received and that council direct staff proceed. To the next step of the rezoning of the property with the recommendation that only the south parcel or parcel. Be rezoned to the medium density residential. So as you. At the last committee meeting, there was a discussion on, you know, what it should be rezoned at. In that, there was some. Thought of rezoning where the current police. Training sets station is as a service commercial. So that was passed by the committee. They thought that was a. Due to a lot of time during the discussion we had with the planners around the table, after the meeting, staff discussed that with the planners to move forward. And the planner noted that, given the official plan designation in a residential area, it does complement things. Or does complicate things with the zoning process. And more so, it's not, you know, the best idea to have that commercial zone coming up in that chair room. So with that, that's saying, be the status quo, leave it as it is. And we'd like to move forward with, for instance, changing the. Designation just on partial part of the property and then forward. Why are we going to council first? Well, you guys are eventually going to see it through the approval authority. But we don't want to do all the work and bring it to you guys and get approved. It's just.
Yeah, so just to clarify, we're just zoning the part of property, not the former. Questions from council?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer. The report titled CAO twenty-five dash zero zero five thirty-one Earl Street property update. We received when the council direct staff proceed to the next step of the rezoning. The property with the recommendation that only the south parcel be rezoned to medium density residential. Just want to speak to this. So obviously, this has been the property that we've discussed numerous times. Just to clarify that this does not touch the woodlot to the south. This is just the green space and the opening between the building and the woodlot. So it would not be affecting the woodlot that had potentially sensitive. Birds and bats in there. So believe it at that. Thank you.
Need further comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Next, we move to the Community Healthcare Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Seattle again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be happy to take that, but you recognize Laura for her efforts. She is the second chair of the committee in the. And the affordable housing committee should do an excellent job with the reports. But thank you, Laura. With that being said, the committee, the healthcare committee has had some issues in the forum and some of our committee meetings have been canceled. It's a lack of forum. So the proposal in front of me tonight, move the membership from nine or twelve to nine. One of the items in there as well, in the report, you'll see that. Well, I myself, as the CEO, listed as a community member, I was not included in the appointment file on that committee we made. So if you guys want me to be a voting member, you guys have to state that in this resolution. Otherwise, I'll be removed from being a voting member as well. And continue to not be in the appointment file. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Questions regarding the report?
A comment regarding the report, if I may, the final part of that CEO not being a voting member. Now's the time to include that if so, because I'd like to see it go in there. Because his attendance is. Is there, he's at all meetings, which is quite.
Has to be added to the, Counselor Spencer has the resolution here in the second, so.
If the mover would do that, the CEO will be included as a voting member. That's what I see.
Question through the chair to the clerk, would that be under section B added to D? Under B, there's ABC. Would we add a D? That the CAO be a voting member? Thank you.
So the mover and secondary are good with that. So the rest of council under section B, there'll be a new. ABC, and D would be the CAO would be a voting member of the community. And the clerk has that and everyone understands that. Don't need to read the motion. And I'm just asking, are there any questions, further questions to the report? If not, go ahead, read the motion.
Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Vares, that report CAO two-five zero zero four title of Community Healthcare Advisory Committee Terms of Reference Recommendation. We received as information, B, that council amend the Community Healthcare Advisory Committee Terms of Reference Section Three as follows. A, remove L, B, amend D, the three members to one member. C, amend E to the Chief of Staff or a delegate, delegate physician from TDMH. D, that CAO be a voting member. And then C, that council direct staff to present a bylaw to amend by law. Two thousand twenty-three dash zero, any council advisory committee appointments.
Any comments or discussion? All those in favor? Next, we move to information. Counselor Spencer?
I'd like to request twelve point seven to be considered separately, please.
Council, we just have to basically nod, you're getting an agreement. The clerk and I were looking at the bylaw to make sure we got this right. So I just need basically nods that were good to separate it. And I see it is good. We are going to separate item twelve points. And then, so firstly, we will have Council and Parker put a resolution on the floor for the other items.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Rose. Counselor receives item twelve point one, twelve point two, twelve point three. Twelve point four, twelve point five, twelve point six, twelve point eight, inclusive as information.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding any of those pieces of correspondence? Counselor Spencer?
Through you, Chair, to the clerk, item twelve point eight was very similar. Should that be included in my motion? Or that can be separate?
Well, I would say it's included in this motion here. Thank you.
I didn't hear that. It will be included. It's not separated, twelve point eight.
It's included. It's included in the resolution. Point one, point two, point three, point four, point five, point six, point eight. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carrie. Next, we move to twelve point seven. Which is the request for payment of legal fees. Questions? Or looking for questions from council first. I'm not sure where we would direct. I did reach out to the clerk prior to the meeting to find out if there would be someone, then we didn't get a response. Am I correct? We didn't get a response as to if there'd be anybody here to answer questions. But I'll open the floor. If you have questions, I'm not sure. Who they should be directed to, quite frankly.
Questions regarding what?
The resolution that we received from the BIA requesting.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Payment of legal fees. Anybody have any questions? If I'm going to like, put the motion on the floor, Counselor Spencer?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Parsons, that council receives for information item twelve point seven downtown Tolsenberg BIA Board of Management. Regarding request for payment of legal fees and that council requests the downtown Tolsenberg BIA Board of Management to submit a report. To council regarding the reason for the legal fees, if I could speak to that. I do think twelve point nine also referenced this sort of request. I don't know how we can vote on anything without wholesome overview and there doesn't seem to be any specific information. That would be necessary, I would think, for council to make an informed decision. So that's the reason for the request. Thank you.
Discussion? Writing the resolution? I guess the, so your report just, it would be mostly asking what the current legal fees might be? Because future legal fees, I'm not sure what the BIA is. Going to say. Like in a report. Future legal fees and complaints on HR matters. So that's essentially what they are in the future. But as far as whatever might be current. The resolution speaks to why they're requesting the money. And so I'm just seeking clarification on what type of report you want back. It is regarding the current legal fees?
To submit a report to council regarding the reason for the legal fees. So obviously, it would be the ones they've incurred. Because we might not know the reasons in the future.
Counselor Parsons?
Yes, I was just going to say that me is. Pretty straightforward. The wording on the decision after the BIA. Is what I think they should exactly report back on to council. I mean, it's, it's what, it's a matter they want raised and considered and. I believe the BIA should respond to, to the motion that's on the floor here now to. To give a report based on their decision, like the way it's written.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? I'm going to turn the chair over to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So this is twelve point nine, no.
There in the back room. Do we know that? There is a letter here from a member of Curtis from the BIA. And Mr. Curtis is making a recommendation or a request to council for, in regards to the boundary adjustment. For the BIA service area, the potential of a boundary adjustment. And Mr. Curtis is asking. Let's, he's asking for, but I'll read the letter. Let's pause this expansion until full consultation take place. A fair and transparent plan is shared, a one that ensures every business has a voice and receives value in return. We urge you to listen to the collective voice representing strong Tolsenberg businesses and ask for a reply. That sums up the letter here that Mr. Curtis has. And the resolution would be to receive it as information. And that's simply it. I suppose if I have, could I have a comment from the clerk? Is there anything that? That the clerk would like to respond to this in terms of the final decision? Is the final decision on the boundary change, the decision of this council?
Yes, the final decision of this council should the objection threshold not be met per the municipal act process.
Okay, fine. So with that said, you know, just ask, are there any comments to the letter that we've already from Mr. Curtis? Counselor Parsons?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the clerk, I believe the clerk has told us. There is a process, it's defined under the municipal act. The process is being followed. I think, I don't disagree with some of the points in Mr. Curtis's letter, but it's premature. In my view, the process must take its place. And the results from, from the community will speak. And then there may be an opportunity for that letter to come back. I, I am in support of taking it as information, but nothing else tonight. Thank you.
And that's simply what the resolution drives us to take as information. Any comments, any further comments on the, on the, Counselor Lucian? Through you to the Deputy Clerk, just, just, just to clarify where we're at. Where are we at with this process right now with the BIA?
Right, through you, Deputy Mayor, to council. We are currently in the objection period, which is a sixty day period. The last date for objections is June tenth. So staff will need to evaluate the responses we received. Prepare a report to council. I'm suspecting that would be probably the August meeting. Right, the position would come back to this table.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Through you to the clerk, there seems to be some confusion on how people get the letters from the owners of the buildings to how they could reply. How do we? I guess, how do we get them to know that they're allowed to do that? Because they're the ones that are paying the BIA response. Oh. They're not getting the letters from the businesses. How do, how do we get that through to those people that aren't getting the letters from the owners of the buildings?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to council. So as per the process, the municipality was required to notify the property owners. That's the information we have from the. Ed tax role. And it is for the municipal act responsibility of the landlord to notify any tenants that are responsible. For a portion of the property taxes. We don't know case by case. Some landlords pay for the entire property taxes for a property. Others, if they have tenants, that can be divvied up. Fifty percent to one, fifty percent to the other. So that is on the landlord. It is their responsibility. But certainly, if anybody has any questions or needs a copy of the letter, it is available on our website and they can reach out to our office for copies. With the property specific role number and reach out.
And just to follow up. So is that only for commercial or is it also for the tenants that are residential part of the building?
So it's for commercially, commercially appraised properties. So if the tenant pays a portion of the property taxes as a tenant of that commercial property. A business renting a unit, they would have the option to object.
But not the residential part of it. The apartments that are above. The commercial building.
So if, if their tenant paying property tax for that building under that role number, yes, they would have the right object.
Thank you.
That answers your question, Counselor. For clarity. Any further question? Seeing none, we'll ask Counselor Rosehart to read the resolution as further.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer, that council received the following items as information. Twelve point nine, sharing Curtis's letter to council via BIA bounty expansion. Thank you.
With the resolution, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question all in favor. And that's carried unanimously. We can call the, there will be a seat back into the room. The issues have been dealt with, voted on. The chair is yours.
Thank you.
Great. So we are on. Staff reports. Thirteen point one, Town Hall Project Update.
How much time do I got?
Thank you, Mayor, and with the council community. So for you today is a staff report on the Town Hall project. As you guys may recall, council director staff have come back with some updates on Sand Lysberg. Of the Grayfield site and one twenty-one concession. And we have done that in the staff report. The staff, so first of all, I'd like to thank everyone that's on the submitted line and as well as our. Pressure for Nalapulia. It was a collective effort. So thanks everyone for their involvement in that. There was a lot of literature review over the years that we had to go back to staff reports and pull from. So thank you. The recommendation is that the report be received and that council selects an option. And that's potentially left blank. There's some cost aspects for council here. There's some pros and cons listed as well. And I think council needs to make a informed decision on a variety of reasons. So we'll let council make that decision. And that council direct staff proceed with the detailed design on the construction of what offer option they picked. And that council confirmed the inflation index to be used, the overall cost construction limit. To be determined by staff's candidate, building construction price index for the London area. So recently, the London area has an index. Now, we recommend we use that in a previous report, we should index that construction value. It is important to do that. And that's the lowest possible scale given the proximity of the London Tolsenberg versus Ottawa, Kingston, or another center. So the report starts off with some background, some discussion points. I think the meat of the potatoes are the options which we want to discuss and. Summary for council and the community and staff. So option one is Penn Lysberg. When we look at the cost estimates. Using plus BG's numbers, that is the highest cost on the low and high cost estimates. We provide a low and high cost estimates. Because there are various scenarios that could be applied. With that being said, too, you should know the square footage you're getting with that. The pros, I won't list all the pros and cons of each problem, but one where I think that council, you know, talks about in their decision making. So with the customer service center. And of course, it's a familiar site where it's already accustomed to being their tactical water building location. It's high visibility. The ownership, the owner's location right. The next gen nine one one backup facility costs are already implemented. They've already been established at that location. Some of the consumables sites are inefficient layout. The building is long and narrow design and misfunctionality. Hence why more square footage is needed to get certain things in there as opposed to the great field site. Extensive renovations are needed. There's need for structural and system upgrades along with demolition work. Limited civic space. There's not room for expansion afterwards unless you want to go up and. About, you know, getting the building ready for a second level. Parking shortage, there's limited onsite parking, but there is parking goes by. And temporarily relocation stop in Jordan Park, and it's not working or doming, would be temporarily relocated. There's no, one of the questions asked from staff was, what is the ability of daycare? Given that there's no room for expansion at this location, we would say there is no. It's not suitable to have some daycare as well. There's no issue of moving by that location. Option number two is the Grayfield site, Harvey Street and Broad Street. When you look at the cost estimates and only the cost estimates, not the pros and cons. That is the lowest cost on the high and low scenario. One of the abilities of that for the Grayfield site. And the concession relocation is, if we took into the fact that we discussed that we could probably sell the customer service center. And there's some allocated amounts given to that. One of the things you need to know with the Grayfield site is it's the smallest space you're getting, sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-three square feet. Some key considerations that you need to consider as well is it's an estimated of two million five thousand. Five hundred thousand to offset the total costs if you were selling the customer service centers. Again, I just thought of that for that, the Grayfield site and one twenty-one concession. When it comes to highs and lows, we use plus BG's numbers for most of the scenarios. In this scenario, we did develop another low cost estimate. And what we did is we took actual construction projects that were familiar in the area. We're not focused more around the council table, which is Zora and East River Power Stock. We took their first, their finalized first square footage rates. Indexed it with the construction cost at twenty-two thousand twenty-five rates. And you have that there. Later on, when we get there, we add some other variables, which we'll talk about shortly. So I think it's reasonable to make that argument. That that could be the low cost estimate, or at least a cost estimate, in this case, the low cost estimate, because those were actual construction. And their prices in the area. And again, it's indexed in twenty twenty-five. But when you consider this, that you got to remember that those locations were one. Story, our locations, our Grayfield location, you're opposed to two stories. So with that, you got to take into an elevator. And of course, there's costs that we noted in the cost estimate for the Grayfield site. And we have little lines and poles. Point that two thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So once you take those into consideration, you get another square footage cost, which is four hundred forty-seven. Dollars and sixteen cents per square foot. And that would say would be the lower one. We're going to use that somewhere. In this case, it's going to be lower one. But I think it's a good estimate to use. Pros of the Grayfield site, it is efficient. The efficiency, new facility would improve overall functionality, optimize layout. There is room for, there's potential room for civic space, I should say. There is parking availability goes by. No demolitions required, uninterrupted construction as it goes through the customer service center. Sustainability potential with the new build, revenue offset by sale of customer service. And again, for temporary staff relocation, like relocating the staff of customer service. In this case, some of the staff at your other locations that you're leasing could move into the customer service center and you have a cost savings. Another of the causes of the Grayfield site is that there is a ground lease restriction. This site is encumbered by the city in these agreements. That needs to be taken into consideration. Utility costs, relocating the northern cell hydro pole, which we discussed, there's a cost to that of two hundred. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You need to relocate the next gen nine one one backup facility, plus the excess fiber at the customer service. And again, these are minimum estimates of about twenty-one thousand and twenty-five thousand. Parking impact, there'd be a loss of approximately fifty parking spaces. And of course, another thing council needs to take into consideration is this site may require renovation and act to what. As far as the daycare is concerned, given the space around the facility, if the new build, there is space for daycare facility to build out lots. Option number three is one twenty-one concession REIT. The cost of these two compared to the others is the highest cost. But again, please remember what you're getting for those costs, while it's higher on the surface, you are getting twenty thousand square feet. As opposed to sixteen thousand square feet with the new build. The staff visited the site and the engine, the manager of engineering's comments are there. I won't go through all of them, but some of the ones that. Council would want to consider in moving forward is the overall condition of the building is being fair. The roof and roof tile units likely are nearing end of their expected life span and replacement cost is seven hundred thousand dollars. Seven hundred, yeah, seven hundred thousand dollars. So with that being said, and this is an additional inspection by our manager of engineer. And they will need replacement in the near future. You probably want to do that before you move in staff and have to do major architectural changes in the future. Bearing service concern, this, we didn't get a price on this, but a buried service, a buried service cross at the south addition. And will likely need to be rerouted when the parking lot is repainted. and will likely need to be rerouted when the parking lot is repainted. Whether that's now or later, we note that the parking lot is probably, you know, the last number ten years, and there's something in the process associated with that. Um, I think we're not moved to that time, but maybe needs to be, uh, moved right away. Uh, expansion potential, the southwest corner of the property, uh, could be enclosed to include the lawyers, that's the five thousand square feet, that it's a, it's a cupboard, it's not part of the twenty, we completely calculated one of twenty-nine and twenty-five, there's five thousand square feet that was used, that was just to cover all the stomach built in, but that adds, adds to some, uh, potential there, obviously, that's more of a cost. So, yeah, it would be on, on the positive side then. Um, interior condition, the interiors are dated and renovations would likely improve. Flooring replacement, updated washrooms, energy and kitchenette. So the pros of one twenty-one concession is it's the largest building area, there's sufficient space for company all in this track, straight of staff. And in addition, if you want to use that for the closing area, if you are, or built on, uh, other section of the property, have a daycare as well. Uh, there's efficient layout potential, the empty rectangle footprint allows for an optimized design. Uh, civic space opportunity, as there's land around it, just opportunity for that as well. Uh, there's convenient parking access across right off, right on property. Uh, there's onsite parking. Uh, the structural suitability, the ceiling height is likely to meet the necessary requirements. There's no major demolition required, there will be some demolition with the lock, or whatever state like that, or some major, some, some minor, uh, reconstruction, but no major demo, demolition. Um, future expansion potential is there as well. Uh, given the fair, the square footage of the space and the, uh, full section. Uh, there is a completed environmental site assessment, which will remove any uncertainty related to environmental conditions. And temporary relocation stop, again, similar to the Grayfield site, uh, some staff can move over to customer service, if we're not gonna touch customer service, then we can uh, we're up in some of our leased areas. But the cons of one twenty-one concession, and the biggest con is this, when you're looking at the cost, the biggest con is you have to pay for his property, we don't own his property. The other property is, you know, paid. So that's, you know, the lowest price on the property is three hundred, three million, even a thousand dollars. Um, one other con, we put as a con because it was discussed with the town hall committee, is at the time, the town hall committee and the feedback with the consultation is approximately downtown core, this is just outside of downtown core. Um, extensive window renovation will be needed. Uh, significant interior and exterior upgrades will be needed, so there will be some major renovations in that respect. Uh, again, similar to the Grayfield, there is a need to relocate the next gen nine one and the Nexus fiber. When you turn the estimates, we, we're talking forward with a more particular cost, while you're looking between the two, about fifty thousand to sixty thousand. Then that's a low, a low estimate, uh, and there's, as we discussed again, just about to re, uh, visited, there's potential for daycare in that location. Um, so on table four, there's a cost summary of the three options. So in there is all the square footage, you gotta keep in mind the square footage you're getting. Overall, the Grayfield site shows a lowest cost estimate. Um, what we did is you have your high and your low cost estimate, and there's a bunch of variables you have to take into consideration. So one of the variables that applies to the Grayfield site in one twenty-one concession is the fact that you can get revenue from the sale of the customer service center. Um, one of the items that only applies to one, for the one concession, is you have to purchase the property, so that, that amount needs to be taken into consideration. Um, one of the amounts you have to consider for the Grayfield site and only the Grayfield site is environmental remediation requirement, and the minimum amount is about two hundred fifty thousand there. Uh, there's temporary staff relocation, the customer service center would require a cost, and the other ones, we might see a benefit toward that. And then, of course, we have to go to the relocation of the fiber. Um, and you have the roof and rooftop unit replacement, we'd wanna do that right away, most likely through, you know, one twenty-one concession, there's a cost associated to that. And then on those, you get the total cost, again, Grayfield with the lowest, customer service center with the highest. Uh, one of the things I wanna note about concession street is when you take in the cost per square foot, uh, still Grayfield's the lowest, but the concession tree is the lowest cost per square foot on the high end. And in summary, not just the cost, you know, council must take consideration pros and cons of each of the variables, believe, and think about it.
Thank you, very comprehensive, welcome, thank you, Councilor Spencer.
Here, uh, Mayor, for the benefit of people that may be watching on our YouTube channel, um, could we just take a moment to explain what we mean, or the geographical base of the Grayfield, and also what we mean by one, uh, twenty-one concession street? If the people that watch this broadcast might wanna know where those places are.
Absolutely, uh, one twenty-one concession street east is the former community market. And the Grayfield site is the site at Brock and Harvey Street, uh, which is the parking lot, uh, within, within the mall.
Between Abidale Church and Post Office, parking lot, right, yes.
The Mayor Gilvace to C A O Pratt, uh, just on the noted, uh, buried service, uh, concern. Um, is that underneath the building, or is that to the south where the unfinished, like just the parking cover, or not the parking coverage, but the coverage in the back, the open area, is that where that is, or is it?
Yeah, I'll give you, uh, Councilor Spencer, this is your final one twenty-one concession, see if this will be answered, I don't know.
The mayor of Councilor Parker, uh, that was identified, uh, by engineering, um. My understanding is there's no services underneath the building, it's, it traverses the property by, through the parking lot portion of the I'm sorry, through the parking lot portion of the property, not the parking lot portion of the building.
Just to confirm, that's what I took from our, our watcher as well, that's what I heard in, across shipping sales, all last one, so I'll, we'll give you, uh, that's what they do.
Thank you, uh, at the last meeting, if we look through the minutes, we'll note that, uh, there was a request made to investigate this new property as this came up, because prior to that, there was option one and two, which was Grayfield site and, uh, ten was grabbed. This, this gave a third option, and at that time, um, the economic development officer had suggested to us that he may need some funding to do an investigation, and council gave direction that, let's do some in-house research prior to that, which was done, and thank you for that. And I'm sure you put a lot of hours into this, and, and I truly appreciate what you've done to it. My question is a direct question, uh. Will there be more investigation into that, uh, concession street site with a cost prior to coming up with, um, could there be any surprises where that would be taken out of the equation? Because that bottom line, uh, could be not accurate.
I'll take that one, and you can supplement to see this, so thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor, to the Madam Mayor. So what was important was timing, we wanted to get you as first as possible, because, um, there's other things we could have looked into regarding one twenty-one concession community mark, but it is on the market for public sale, so if council's looking to add that property, what we don't want is we wanna bring this back for three months from now, and so, so hence this report today, uh. If council, you know, wanted us to look into it further, could there be an additional offer, uh, pending certain things, perhaps, if someone also could put it as a firm offer? With that being said, when you're looking at the cost of the building, yes, you know, we're not making a regulation around that at all, but if you were exploring that, I don't think you would wanna pay face value, you want to be, you know, there was the cost of the roof and the rooftops, that would probably wanna come off that, and maybe some other.
Sure, there, there could be, so that answers your question, it does, yeah, thank you.
Further questions, Councilor Spencer?
No, thank you, to the chair, um, I have a few questions. Uh, for the Grayfield site, it, um, I think it's a great value to point out that it was the only one marked high with the carbon neutral goals and enhanced lighting. Um. And I guess my question would be maybe to, uh, Director Finance. Um, under the Federation of Community Municipalities, under an umbrella called Green Municipal Funds, they're offering a twenty percent grant, um, for ten million dollars sustainable municipal buildings, is that something that we could possibly access?
Go through the chair, Madam Mayor, I'll start with that, and I'll hand it over to the Director of Finance. And so there are, there are grants out there that we could access, and one of them could be for a new build and bring it to a certain standard. But that being said, there are grants out there, um, for remodeling or reconstructing other buildings as well, but you have to meet a certain threshold. Um, and, and again, these are grants, and what the, what the director's gonna tell you is that sometimes they close these grants early, you have to meet a certain threshold. You can do all that work, not meet the threshold, you'll not get the grant, I'll return it over to the Director, thank you.
Thank you, uh, C A O Pratt, uh, three one, uh, Mayor, uh, yes, so there is F C M funding for both a study, which is a feasibility study, and then either a retrofit, uh, or a construction, new construction. The study, uh, just looking at the website, is currently closed for due to high demand, so there's no funding for studies, which actually a feasibility study is required if we were to look at the, uh, applying for funding for either, uh, a retrofit or new construction. The, um, under either scenario, there is grant funding, as you mentioned, twenty percent for new construction, fifteen percent for retrofit. But that comes in combination with a loan. So the two cannot be separated, so it would be a combination of both loan and grant. Uh, so F C M though, as the C A O Pratt mentioned, um, looks to fund the most innovative and impactful initiatives. So not all eligible projects would be approved for funding, so we could go through all that work, meet eligibility, and still not receive funding. Um, so staff could work with the design archetype to look at what extra costs would be incurred by incorporating elements to meet the project eligibility guidelines. So again, we're looking at, um, initiatives that would make the building basically net zero, which would increase the capital costs, you know, upfront. Theoretically, the long-term operating costs, uh, would be less. Uh, but we can take a look at the eligibility guidelines and see if the additional costs to be incurred could be achieved within the expenditure limits that by council.
And if I could follow up to the chair, um, the concession site is marked medium, uh, for net zero. Would that, would a medium category assist with any grants, um, available to that site as well? Or does it mean like a high?
Um, through Mayor, not Mayor, I believe just the designations are meeting tied for this purpose of this report don't necessarily align with the project eligibility guidelines, so we would have to look at specific requirements um, under those guidelines, as to whether or not we could incorporate those in the design stage.
Okay, if I could continue through the chair, um. The, the bigger location at concession, um, although not in the downtown core might be part of the core if the expansion of the boundary happens. Um, one of the things was so that people could walk. Do we know if there's a bus that goes down that way for people down concession? If, if that's an option, or if it doesn't, is it an option for us to make it a route if it were to end up at concession?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, I'll leave you over to, uh, Director of.
Yeah, the mayor, I'm just looking at the map here for the Tigo, so the Tigo goes on Tilsen, Tilsen app, uh, all the way, um, to Low Street.
Yep.
And then it turns left at a location, so, um, my understanding there is, um, a bus stop within walking distance, it's, uh, four hundred, couple hundred years, so.
Awesome, thank you. Um, and I, can I just confirm, uh, through the chair, um, the roofed and rooftop units for, uh, concession? I think C A O Pratt, you mentioned like it was seven hundred thousand, and we could negotiate that with the, the cost of the sale, or is that already in the also with the asphalt renewal of five hundred to seven hundred thousand? Is that included in the price of, um, what's listed, or is that on addition? And like you, I think you suggested that we could use that for bargaining?
Uh, through the mayor, uh, Councilor Spencer, so Deputy Mayor asked a question whether there are things that we think, you know, some of the costs that we can use as a bargaining chip, or that maybe come off the top, so the purchasing, the asking price of the purchase is three million, eight hundred thousand. Now, through the management engineering department, I think we're talking, it's, it costs about seven hundred thousand dollars, there's already, you know, given the value, we, you know, we're kind of making the cost graph, we could argue that, you know, the first price going this much, that's hard to mean, um. Parkour officer too, there could be an argument there too, I think the, the, what I'm hearing the Deputy Mayor saying, Brian's question is, you know, I'll use the first price, I understand why you use the first price, but we probably get lower than that, I think.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize, I just have two more questions, is it an option to sell the Grayfield site?
Uh, Mayor, um, I will ask the development mission to confirm my answer, uh, the answer would be no, it is covered by at least. At this juncture.
At this juncture. In the future.
Okay, but currently, right now, we can either build on it, or we can't sell it.
I'm, I'm, as the chair, I would suggest that we had a closed session regarding the ground lease, and if that's an appropriate question for closed session, then we can offer open session, and we can't discuss the particulars of the ground lease in open zone.
Okay, and my last question would be, um, in previous, uh, council resolution, um, we were going to have a minimum of fifty percent down for the town hall, should council decide, uh, with the concession uh, site, um, how would we, uh, come up with a three point eight million to secure it, so it doesn't get sold?
It's the question I'll be bringing out to Director, uh, Finance Development.
The mayor to Councilor Spencer, so, um, in terms of somebody offsetting revenue, certainly it could be the existing customer service center building, we've talked about already. Um, I wouldn't, beyond that, any amount that's the difference between the I guess the purchase price for the concession street property and the sale price of the customer service center building, uh, that would have to be added to the funds that to be raised, uh, as you've noted already, the council's directed this on.
Deputy Mayor, just to add to that, so the issue, do you want to timing, obviously, purchase of the properties in upfront, uh, initial capital play, so, um, we're just take a look at whether we can find that internally, or whether we will issue that.
Question? Uh, question to the C A O on timing, uh, between option two and three, which is the Grayfield site and the concession street site. Would one be quicker for occupancy than the other? So it would be roughly the same time?
We have the funds to buy one twenty-one concession and make the renovations immediately. I would argue that one for all the session would be the fastest way to get all staff.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilor, please stand.
Just, uh, moving, moving on, the, uh, the last question from Councilor Spencer, as far as the, the funding, uh, to procure it, um. It would, would just seem to me that we'd be waiting either way for sufficient fifty percent funds to, to allow us to move forward, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see how we would, uh, move things forward much faster on, on either site, I think we're, we're waiting for for procurement, uh, or, or for sales of, of entities that, that we can actually fund some of this. Maybe I'm wrong there.
Right now. But we don't have a fire. So, uh, we don't, we can do upgrades over the night, whereas that and to, uh, to a point, there might be some carrying costs, if they go along, if we don't, if we weren't to go the one twenty-one concession way and not do anything with it right away, or if we're going the one twenty-one concession way, and we absolutely want it to move on that faster, and it may change, and last rather late than fifty percent. But to, to that point, I know Development Mission Pratt said he's a seller, customer service center, that's to, you know, five hundred thousand, the estimate there, but if there was a report earlier, you brought, and there was a windmill that were already done. I know we have about a half million, you know, sure for the town hall, and some of that's based on savings, that we, it hurts. Renovate any of that. That's fine.
Deputy Mayor, the only thing that I can think of is that eleven million, um, was based on our construction cost. Um, initially was set. Initially was set for constructing a new building for this renovation. So the purchase price of the property could be deemed as purchasing an asset and then then moves into, uses that asset to build the town hall, which is subject to the eleven million dollar cap. That's one option.
Further questions?
I have an amended resolution. Moved by myself, seconded by Council Rosehart, that the report C A O twenty five dash zero zero two titled Town Hall Project Update We received this information and the council moved into closed session following item eighteen bylaws to consider the following. Following consists of the Town Hall Project, two thirty nine two, part C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And two thirty nine two, part K, a portion, I'm sorry, a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any renegotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or board. We're just keeping in with the with the laws of, of staying in closed session here.
So, do you have any further comments regarding your motion? And the seconders get with that, to move into closed session after the bylaws. Council, have any, any discussion or comments regarding the renovation of Town Hall? So now we are on item thirteen point three point one, which is a request for extension. Is there anything I'd like to highlight?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a request for extension received from this company here for land and development committed. Sorry, development companies to start construction in industrial park. This is phase one. And there's some personal situations that has prompted this situation. And so they are requesting an extension and paying in the proposal here that they paid performance, an increased performance deposit to access that relationship council's. So our agreement of purchase and sale requires a ten percent performance deposit based upon the original purchase price of the property. In this case here, staff is proposing a twenty percent performance deposit that is repayable, should they meet, as long as they meet their covenants. So that's a request in front of your councils for a manufacturer looking to expand to Tolsenburg, just not as fast as they planned. Thank you.
Questions from council? Have a couple. Why did the site plan take so long? Way of getting information or?
Be honest, it is relying, the site plan processes are aligned upon the proponents submitting and responding. And, and they certainly have not been expeditious in that purpose. So I think our staff have responded appropriately. I think there's more on their side as well.
Why for so long? Like, we've already extended this. Right, and then that's another, another issue inside the era.
Yeah, that's correct. So they've already burned through five months. They were, they're opposed to site plan approval. And they made this request well into this current year. They're one year to start construction in December of last year. And so essentially, it's a year from now is what this extension would give them. But legally, it's a year and a half because they're, kind of start, deadline to start construction was December of last year.
Further questions?
We have seconded by Council Lucy Annie that report E D M two five dash zero one six title Request for Extension one six seven seven one two three Ontario Inc. We received and that one six seven seven one two three Ontario Inc. Be granted an approximate sixteen month extension in the period to start construction until April thirtieth, twenty twenty six, subject to the town receiving a refundable performance deposit of thirty five thousand five hundred and forty-three, being a twenty percent of the original purchase price by June thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Discussion or comments from council? All in favor? Very best remove to the finance department. Treasurer's Development Charge Statement Report. And do you have anything to highlight, Director Gallo?
Nothing to highlight with the mayor. The information is there, it's a statutory report to which it's an annual statement, just looking at the balance of the development charges, what has been brought in and what has been spent. And just knowing that the, following obviously the legislation, which currently requires any funds within the services under, for a highway, at least sixty percent has to be allocated. And that is as part of the changes to the conceal legislation last year that tries to ensure that municipalities are spending these in a accurate time.
Thank you. And just as we make changes, they're probably going to make more changes. Any questions? Seeing none, Council persons.
Moved by person, seconded by Council Parker, the report Finance twenty five dash zero one two titled twenty twenty four Treasury Development Charges Statement. We received this information.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? All in favor? Moving to B I A finances and is there anything you'd like to highlight in your report? And then I'll open the floor to council for questions. If you have questions. Questions? Seeing none, then Council Parker, you have a resolution.
Moved by myself, seconded by Council Rosehart, but the downtown Tolsenburg B A A Board of Management would be requested to provide additional information to council as to how it has satisfied itself as to whether or not the anonymous letter received is vexatious, including a wiring of noted six businesses of records they may have on the alleged cash transactions and reviewing the corresponding financial records of the B I A. Should such financial records of the businesses and of the B I A exist, to provide such records to the auditors as part of the twenty twenty four fiscal audit? And should the such financial records of businesses exist and those of B A A not exist to initiate a forensic audit through Malars Charter professional accountants, and I'd like to speak to that. So earlier tonight, we received a request to pay any current and or future leakages related to the letter that is mentioned that we received as information earlier tonight as well. I think that based on the report, we need to limit the risk to the municipality. And hopefully that if there is an investigation, it will put the rumors to that are out in the public to bed and kind of quell them because it is something that has created some waves around the municipality. And I think it's an opportunity to just kind of put those rumors to bed if that's the case. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any further, any discussion or comments? Council Spencer?
Were the legal fees request and the anonymous letter even related? They didn't know they were related, that's why I'm asking.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I can answer that, partly just because of my position as a V A's on, representing on the B A A board. I, I don't believe, well, I guess the requests for legal fees would be related to the past, but also the future. So in the future, if more legal fees were incurred, then yes, it would be related to the request. But I believe it's largely related to the past. Not different requests, largely related to the past. And so I think they are largely separate issues. Hope that's clear.
This letter, there was a letter that said recent activity. Yeah, there's something written somewhere. I think I read it. So I'm sure of it.
So there is a letter from the B I A Board of Management that states that the Board of Management of Downtown Tolsenburg B I A hereby requesting the Corporation of the Town of Tolsenburg pays all current and future legal fees related to the vexatious complaints and H R matters relating to the same. So based on the report, I believe that that is what they are requesting for about any potential current and or future legal fees in regards to that letter.
But that letter through the chair doesn't mention that anonymous letter. So I, that's why I'm asking for clarification. I don't think the two are related. But if I could speak in just regards to the motion to the chair, if that's all right. The B I A Board has two CPAs and a financial advisor on it. And there's professional, there are professionals in our community. They've confirmed, they've investigated and confirmed checks and balances. They've confirmed that they're audited independently annually. And this is a response from an anonymous letter sent to hundreds of people that it seemed more, quite frankly, like a smear campaign than seeking truth. I'm not sure if there was merit to it, why they wouldn't have signed it or brought it forth to this council or to the financial rather than hundreds of letters. I think it's also important to note that there's council members in this chamber that never received a letter, that have never even seen this anonymous letter. And I think that's important because it's not included in the package. I had to send a picture of the one I got at my business to a council member. So I think that that one, it seems like a smear campaign, but I will also say that, you know, we have a policy about anonymous complaints and the B I A Board of Management is packed full of capable business people. Several, as I stated, in finance. I'm not going to be questioning the professionalism of this board and the good volunteers on it. I, I will not give merit to unsubstantiated claims that this board has addressed, and I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Other discussion, Council persons?
Yeah, just a question to the motion of Council Parker suggesting a forensic audit. Would anyone be able to know or tell me what the cost of a forensic audit is? And how, how that would be funded? Anyone can, maybe Director Finest would know. I think it sounds like a, a large undertaking or something that's already been investigated, but I'd like to know what the cost of that is and how it's going to be funded. Thank you.
I guess hard to know the, the overall cost. It is more than a standard audit and it depends, I guess, on the initial findings and how thorough the review would need to be.
I read this correctly, the forensic audits, a last, like a last step, right? Like if the information is requested by council is not deemed appropriate or wholesome, then the forensic audit is the absolute last step. This isn't recommending to do a front forensic file, but potentially it could be there.
A follow up. Your mayor, we just kind of moved the scenario to where an unsigned letter widely distributed accused the corporation, members of its council, of, of things like that. Unsigned, as we say. Would, 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 would we be going to that extent on an unsigned letter? We have a policy in place. I, I don't understand why we would do this until we get a signed letter. So I, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support this motion for that very reason. Thank you.
Just to follow up. So my, my thought process behind this, I took the other resolution that was provided by staff in the report. My thought is, if it's being done correctly and we have nothing to worry about and the trust should be there, it should be very easy and very simple to purr. And that's all I'm asking for, because if I'm going to get asked to vote on providing finances for more potential legal fees going forward, this is something that I want to know before I get into making that decision.
I, I, as your worship, as council put a number to that, Board of Management, I can confirm that these are two different issues. The unsigned letter is, is an issue about a completely different thing than the current legal fees, which stem back to the B I A having to defend itself from a former member. Two different issues. And I, I hope that helps Council Parker understand that. That's my take on, on this. But I I, I think when the B I A has an opportunity to respond from that earlier resolution tonight, maybe things will be easier. The only other thing I would add is, it's my understanding, the Ontario branch police are investigating this as well. I know there's been some meetings already. That's a process that I think should run its course and maybe it'll, it'll resolve this what appears to be a smear campaign. I mean, thank you.
For you, Mayor, just in regard to some of the concerns over the way, I guess the, the main concern is moving into a forensic audit and the costs. I don't disagree that if financial records exist for what's there, it shouldn't be hard to to remedy and provide. I, I support this, at least in, in terms of A and B. I'm not so certain about C. Just wonder if you couldn't, we didn't remove that till we've got information back and we could still move down that direction at a later time.
Thank you, Council. Council?
I will put a friendly amendment that if A and B are not satisfied, that before it goes to an audit, that comes back to council for approval.
Okay, so C. And the seconders get with that. So basically, C is going to change that A and B are not satisfied, that staff need to bring back to council with potential for a forensic audit. That's the idea, right? Council, so council and mover, seconder is good. And council, Lucy Annie, that's what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you.
I would like you to just read both C parts.
You, Mayor, to the council. So C will not read if it causes A and B are not satisfied that the matter be brought back to council for a direction on how to proceed.
Good. Okay, council fully understands. Deputy Mayor?
I'm just wondering about funding for part A and B. Are, is there additional funding to this? And who would pick up the funding? The cost of the, of the because this isn't based on an anonymous letter. I'm just following up with, with what Council Person said. Is there a cost to it?
I, I don't think there's any cost to this for A and B. So it's, it's a matter of staff time to develop to develop the response to this and then for them to respond to their board and through their board to this council. Mayor, I, I, I'd really feel better if we had a signed letter on this. We don't have a signed letter.
Thank you. Council Spencer?
Through you, Chair, and perhaps Counselor Carson is the representative of the B I A Board could answer. The letter states that there was a special council meeting.
Were you asking a question? Yeah, the resolution is on the floor. This is for discussion purposes only. Questions are prior to the resolution made on the floor.
Comment then. The letter states that the B I A Board had a special meeting on May sixth to address these concerns. And that their financial records that are audited annually are looked at and that the Board of Management reviewed policy and procedure, and there is no evidence of misconduct and there's no merit to this. To doubt this board, I think is not a good look for this council. These are professionals. As I said, there's two accountants and a financial analyst. And I, as I said, I won't be voting in favor of it and I will ask for a reported vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. So are there any further comments or discussion?
Sorry, this has been untoward. I actually have to apologize. I was misrecalling the separate conversation. Sorry, this has been untoward, I actually have to apologize, I was misrecalling the separate conversation, I believe that in response to the, your question, Councilor Spencer, that the request for funding was directly to this particular company, so my apologies, sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so my my comment is, I just want to say that I thought a lot of research went into this and before, I honestly apologize because the town hall report, too, was excellent, staff did an excellent job. And I felt that this was a very thorough report and obviously some investigation went into it. It did outline that an audit isn't necessarily going to capture a situation like this and if there are risks, I will be supporting the resolution just to ensure that the town is doing its due diligence because the finances are tied, I just wanted to say all around, I think there was a lot of work that went into this and for staff to report professional opinion, so I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All recorded, sorry, I forgot, I will turn it over to the clerk.
Mayor, that's Counselor Spencer called for a recorded vote, I'll start with Counselor Spencer, and when I go around, please indicate either yes or no in response to the motion, Counselor Spencer?
No.
Deputy Mayor?
No.
Counselor Lucian?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Parsons?
No.
Counselor Brosheart?
Yes.
Mayor Gomez?
Yes. Right. Next we move forward to you. I am thirteen point five point one and our new fire chief has been sitting there very patiently for a long time. So welcome, and we're going to be discussing a new radio purchases, do you have any highlights that you'd like to add to your to council?
Well, thank you, your worship and members of council, I'm sorry to hear the first time official meeting with you guys or funding or for you to fund it, try to imagine how they could have it. Yes, I've and I've brought enough the devil or assistant, keeping communications just case that coordinate operational question. So this kind of came to us late April, like the last weekend of April. Vanessa had five nine or vendor in to do some upgrades because they were doing some adding channels in Davenport County, two municipalities, I think it's two of we serve there. Orangeville and Shelburne, I think it is, but two larger ones. And it's common for fire services or other organizations to add channels to their spectrum as the municipalities grow, they need those. Anyway, unfortunately, our older equipment does not support that and we, once they activate those, we will not be able to communicate with them on three radio consoles, now those radio consoles are what dispatchers have in front of them at the desk, which which they communicate with the departments. And three of our consoles upstairs at Firecom and Fire Department, they do have the ability to do that, they were newer, they were replaced in twenty twenty three. I do not know myself why the other ones were not replaced at the at the time. It's, I have my assumptions, but it's probably they were, might have been the older ones that were used before and it was a timing thing, finance at the time. In any event, we're required as a as a service provider under a contract by writing us to communicate with them at both our primary and secondary locations. And with this, we will not be able to fill that. So I'll leave that. Any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, I'll open up for Deputy Mayor.
Just one question, thank you for your report. The what about a special levy to the particular municipalities that are requesting this upgrade for their particular service? This service that you're you're asking for for these upgrades is only for what, one municipality?
One county right now, we could do it at Tolsomer eventually down the road, require those. So apparently these consoles, and I stand corrected, Vanessa may be able to answer this. They were, we were told as a municipality some time ago, prior to twenty twenty three, that they were not serviceable. They can't do anything with them, we can't upgrade them, parts aren't available for them. And I got not sure the reasoning why, but we did put three new ones in and the three ones were not. As far as to direct question, I haven't investigated that. I just know we I ident- we identified the problem, want to get to you guys as quick as possible to make the decision.
Well, that could always come later, a special levy after we do the purchase, because it has to be done. Second part of that, if I may, is this something that you think will be coming up for all all the all the municipalities?
As growth happens, it happens, when I was at Woodstock, we we've added two channels in my time, or redo a channel in my time there.
It's coming, it's going to have to be done.
As Tolsomer grows, it's highly likely it'll happen here.
Right, thank you very much.
Other questions? Is there any grant coming for this new thing?
Not that I'm aware of right now.
Right now, no, I'm sure, I'm sure you want. Okay, any further questions? Yes.
Because as you mentioned, the technology is a new radio, it will be in the new one, so given that the 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 service model that you have and still continuing to grow, could grow a lot in the future. Will these new radios be quite expandable with this?
Yes, with the newest technology.
Always add on.
Yeah, I'm not sure they'll last, maybe, that's it. Usually my experience is plus ten years on this side of people. And the people we use, they've been in the business an awful long time, they're familiar with expandability.
Thank you. Other questions?
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Spencer, that report FRS twenty five dash zero three titled Fire Service twenty twenty five Fire Communications Emergency Equipment Upgrade, we receive this information. And that the purchase of three new replacement console radios in the amount of sixty nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for fire communication to be approved as a sole source purchased for our, from our current vendor that maintains all of our radio equipment pursuant to section six B of Purchasing Policy five dash zero zero six and that the purchase be funded from the fire department equipment reserve.
Any further comments or discussion, Counselor Russell?
Thank you, my mayor, huge in fire chief, is there any return value on the old ones we have, do we get anything for that?
No, no.
Nothing?
No.
Counselor, questions before the resolution, sorry, counselors, the questions before the resolution, discussion after. Discussion? Did we go on this yet?
No.
All those in favor? All right, consideration minutes, Deputy Mayor?
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Luciani, this council receives the following advisory to many minutes of information. The Tolsomer Airport Advisory from April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, Community Healthcare Advisory Committee, May sixth, twenty twenty five, Founder's Day Subcommittee, May twentieth, twenty twenty five, Museum, Culture, Heritage and Special Words Advisory Committee, dated May twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Council, have any questions or comments regarding the many minutes? I don't know, if you're in favor? Paulson? All everyone's okay, Carrie. Next we move to bylaws, Counselor Spencer?
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Person, is that the following bylaws be read for first, second, third and final reading at the mayor and clerk, the and are hereby authorized to sign the same, replace the purpose seal there on two. Twenty twenty five dash zero four three to amend by law twenty twenty three zero zero nine, Council Advisory Committee appointments.
Thank you, any comments, all those in favor? Carrie, I'm going to, I'll turn it over to the clerk, he is going to read the resolution to go on to close and I'll be looking for a mover in a second there.
Mayor, a motion that counts move into closed session at seven forty two P M. To consider town hall project two thirty nine two C, proposal pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. Then two thirty nine two K, a position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or obvious happens value of a form.
Moved.
I thought I had a mover, which was to occur in a second or Luciani. Any comments, all those in favor? Carrie, we will just wait a second to confirm that we're offline.
We're ready. Okay, we are back online, so now we're going to confirm the proceedings by law. Oh, no, wait, first we need a resolution to go back into open, and I can turn over to the clerk.
Mr. Mayor, that council convenes open session at 8:00 PM and reports evolving from the meeting closed to the public. The council discussed the town hall project and then the provided direction to staff. Need a move on this.
Counselor Spencer and Deputy Mayor. Counselor Spencer and Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? Confirm proceedings by law, Counselor Roser.
Thank you, we will run without second by Counselor Parker. That by law 2025-042, the confirming of meetings of the council meeting held on May 26th, 2025, be read for the first, second, third, and final reading, and let the Mayor Murphy and our hereby authorized sign the same and place to corporate seal they're onto. Thank you.
Counselor, all those in favor? Harry and... Items of public interest, I think the duck in America has some exciting news.
I do have some exciting news, a couple of them. I'll start with the lighter one first, and I'll just, if I may, through you ask them. Well, she's not here, she just left her director. I'm assuming the outdoor pool, Lake Lysgore Water Park, will be open Father's Day weekend. It's a little early this year, but I just hope it is, and I just wanted to announce that my favorite service club, which I belong to, it's Alliance Club, and we're sponsoring the first outdoor swim for that Saturday, which is the same day as Turtle Fest, so it's gonna be a very busy day. So that's my announcement. And the other one is, and I'm gonna steal this from Counselor Parker, because he always talks about the youth and the teams in town. Glendale High School baseball, thanks to Derek Bartlow. The boys have won. They were undefeated through the whole season with all of them, and they're going to Wausau tomorrow morning. So we're quite pleased with that. Unfortunately, it's gonna hit Mitchell, and unfortunately, I won't be able to go, but the best of the best are there, and they might even go to all Ontario, so we'll see what happens. So very proud of those boys, they're doing very well. My grandson, of course, is the shortstop, and that's why I've taken so much pride in. Those are my announcements, fair, thank you.
I have a relative on that team as well, so I wish them best of luck tomorrow. Counselor Spencer.
Just a reminder, I've had a few people ask that the clinic is open at Rothen Pharmacy. It is for unrostered patients, it is not a walk-in clinic, but you must make an appointment. This coming Saturday, Taste of Summer event, held by the Hospital Foundation, a fundraiser at the Kingsman Banshee Memorial Park from 12 to 8.
Well, when I was in there the other day, Stephanie was saying that, so that's why I was saying that, that people can call and make appointments, though?
I think you may be able to call and get, I think, I think you may be able to call and get on less.
Yeah.
On rostered less, but the clinic isn't open.
Just wanted to thank you. Not a miracle.
Counselor Roser.
Nothing, thank you.
Just want to put a thank you out to all of the coaches, volunteers, and executive members from Tulsa Minor Baseball, who hosted their opening day on the Saturday in quite chilly weather. So it's good to see that everybody's out on the ball dimes now, so that's, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, there. I circulated a LinkedIn article, I haven't really shared earlier, just about industrial development. I just want to point out to members of council that real estate position in the Highway 3 corridor is the Highway 3 Industrial Corridor, showing Tulsa moves growth, we're seeing a lot of investment along that corridor. And of course, we're overshadowed by St. Thomas and other developments as well. So really, I think that Highway 3 is starting to see its, I guess, its peak, or maybe not peak, but growth. We're excited about that, so that's how we're positioning the town, Tulsa, where we're going to have it through in the future, so, thank you.
But thanks to everybody who attended last Saturday's trail cleanup. The trails look great, and I hope everybody keeps them that way.
Thank you.
Before this council meets again, we will have seen another year come and go of the Turtle Fest, which is going to be on June the 14th, actually it starts on the Friday evening, with a kickoff over at the Station View, Station Arts Center, and then evening at the Anandale Historical, the museum, or I think Movies on the Lawn and whatnot. So lots, lots of things, and you council will remember that, the reward in 30,000 people. Tulsa's single free, biggest single free event. And this is looking even bigger this year. There's gonna be music all day long, starting at 12 noon all the way till 11. There's the old fella here, a local guy, but they would chase bears, that's gonna be playing it too. And, and of course, the headliner is Texas team. So it's opportunity for families, for all of our residents of Tulsa, to come over and enjoy that Turtle Fest free day, and enjoy that. So it's opportunity for families, for all of our residents of Tillsford, to come over and enjoy that Turtle Fest three day and enjoy that experience. And that is, I think, the the day you referred to with the swatch pattern, the Father's Day. One other thing, I had the opportunity on Friday to attend Albert at the the Fast Track Station building. It just seems, Mayor, that it was only just a few months ago when we went there, when you turned the facade and that project was kicked off. And now, lo and behold, there's a building there with nice appointments in it. I think their building cost was like two hundred and forty-four square. And nice units. They're getting ready to go. But the important part I wanted to bring to the community's attention. The twenty nine units that this council negotiated for affordable and able housing, there's a blend of each. I'm not sure of the mix, but they're actually now engaging in a policy. If you know someone that is looking for housing, you can actually make an appointment with, they'll have the harvest U dot C A. And they're, they'll, they'll interview people for affordable and attainable housing there, which is a great thing for our capital. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lucy and I, Lucy Annie and I were there, and we got the sea festival. We got a great tour. It's amazing how fast. It is incredible. I think they're looking at occupancy for the fall. I believe they said by by September, maybe even a little bit earlier. So I just wanted to do a shout out to, there were two people from Tillsford that won the King Charles the Third Coronation Medal. And it sparked me, I knew I had seen it on Facebook, Stephanie Evans was one recipient, and Gray Van Marstel was another. So just wanted to point that out. That's why I have my phone out. It's not like I'm reading my phone, but I was getting the information for those particular awards. And I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to volunteer at the food bank on Wednesday. Great experience. They are always looking for volunteers. I can assure you, they were very shorthanded on Wednesday. And everyone was in there working very, very hard. So if you're interested, contact the food bank. I can see someone on Facebook looking for volunteer hours, and it's a great place to go ahead. And that could put that to CEO. Did you have anything, items of interest?
Yeah, and mayors to the deputy mayors point, the director has confirmed the water purple, new fourteen, Father's Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you for confirming that, and we will go to adjournment. Counsel.
Move on myself, second by Council Lucy. I mean, the council meeting of May twenty six, twenty twenty five, be adjourned at eight sixteen P M.
All those in favor? And that is care.